Good evening. I'd like to call to order this regular board meeting of the Round Lake Area School District Board of Education on April the 10th, 2023 at 7:02 PM. If I can get started, first with a roll call, please.
Mrs. Klingler?
Here.
Ms. Lee?
Here.
Mr. Francisco?
Here.
Mrs. Larson?
Here.
Mr. Jewitt?
Here.
Mrs. McGinnity?
Here.
Mr. De Vera?
Here.
Thank you. And first up is a pledge of allegiance.
In the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First up is an approval of meeting agenda. One slight adjustment. We are going to remove number 10, new business. That is going to come off. So if I can get a motion with the amended removal of number 10, new business.
So moved. Second.
Motion my Ms. Klingler, second my Ms. Lee. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Jewitt?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinnity?
Yes.
Mr. De Vera?
Yes.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes. All right. We have an approved agenda. Just as a reminder for board members, please make sure your cell phones are off the table and on silent. And first up is special recognition to Round Lake Exchange Club Youth of the Month. Mr. Peterson. All right. Good evening, everybody. Tonight, we're going to recognize Hannah Gordon as our youth of the month. Hannah has been a member of many of our AP and honor classes while student at Round Lake High School. She's been a part of our volleyball and basketball teams. She's been in NHS and has served as a vice president of our future medical Panthers program. One of the things that Hannah is most proud is an internship that she's worked with with Northwestern University and partnered with the Baxter Center. And during this time, she's got an opportunity to work with doctors and has worked on some astronomy projects right now. So I'm going to give Hannah the mic and give her an opportunity to introduce herself and tell you a little bit about her.
Okay. Oop, that's fun. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. As you know, my principal said, my name is Hannah Gordon, and I'd like to thank you all for inviting me here today to share my story with you. You see, I see myself as an exquisite dish seasoned with knowledge, marinated and experienced, and plated by a caring cooking crew, placed in a fine setting that was carefully washed and taken care of by compassionate clinic crew. But of all the people who have played a role in my preparation throughout my life, I'm dedicating this speech to the master chef of them all, my dad. My dad raised me with quite the unconventional teaching methods, which was actually the reason why he wasn't my first choice initially. You see, most mentors lead by example, but more often than not, my dad did most of his mentoring by showing me what not to do. For example, he would make a negative comment out loud about a random person on the street, and from that I learned that talking behind people's back, whether you know them or not, is wrong. Or he would be showing off while cooking in the kitchen, and from that I learned that being a showy chef can lead to losing the meal or setting it on fire. These and many other lessons were learned in a very amusing fashion. In addition to his, in addition to the way my dad taught me things, his day-to-day parenting style was a whole other story. When it comes to my dad's way of daily guidance, I got the two-for-one combo. He's been my greatest supporter and critic since day one. But that just taught me early on that life isn't going to be all fried chicken and rainbows all of the time. If I wanted to make it somewhere in the world, I'd have to toughen up and learn how to receive constructive criticism and reject destructive criticism, even when I didn't ask for either. Despite his odd teaching methods and double-bladed guidance, I truthfully see my dad as your typical everyday hero. He's not out there in social media or the news making this huge difference that everyone can see, but he impacts others' lives from behind the scenes. In the words of his sister, one of my favorite aunts, "He gives so much of himself and expects so little in return." And it's so true. His strong worth ethic has shown me that dedication and dependability are virtues that not everyone has but are ones I should strive for. He goes to work almost every day, working more than 12-hour shifts, then comes home and cooks, takes a short nap, and then does it all over again, only ever asking us in return to do the most basic of chores, keep our grades up, and strive to be the best version of ourselves every day. Now that I look back on it, there are quite a few things my dad has taught me by good example. I've learned how a man should treat a woman by the wonderful way he treats my mom. He showed me how to be a good leader by the way I see him put in extra work from home to go above and beyond for the team he supervises at work. However, the greatest lessons that I've learned from my dad is that you don't have to be seen to be a hero, and that real heroes ask for help when they need it. My dad really is the strongest person I know, both inside and out. It's thanks to his unique parenting style that I became the determined, hard-working student I am today. Just as my dad continues to influence my life, I will strive to influence those around me as well. Thank you.
All right. Next up is communications to the board, and the first one is reviewing the FOIA report. Anyone on the board have any questions in regards to the activities on the FOIA report? Hearing none there. We'll move on next to review of contracts under 1,000. We have a couple of them on there. Any questions from the board in regards to that information?
I was just going to add, I know because we had kind of a similar question last board meeting regarding individual contracts. You see these individually for each respective school listed because those come out of their respective individual board budgets or building budgets, excuse me.
Thank you for that clarification. Perfect. All right. Hearing nothing else on those. We'll move on then to opportunity for public comment. As always, members of the public may participate in public comment during regular board meetings by attending in person or by submitting an electronic public comment form. Please note the speakers are limited to three minutes. Electronic public comments will be accepted until 12 noon on the day of the regularly scheduled meeting, and the public commenter will be contacted to confirm identity. Once confirmed, the electronic public comment will be provided to all board members in written form, and a link to the electronic public comment is in the electronic documentation. We did not have any electronic public comment, but I do have some local public comment, and we will just go right off the top of how these were handed to me. And our first one is Annie Case. And just as a reminder, we have a limit of three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Annie Case, and I am an art teacher at Beach Elementary, where I've served as art teacher for the past nine years. I am the longest-standing elementary art teacher in our district, and I've seen a lot of positive growth during my time as an educator in the development of our program. Throughout my time, we've created a rigorous, standards-based art curriculum that encourages critical thinking, inquiry, and student-led choice. We provide a wide variety of materials and encourage exploration and give our students a way to share their voice. I'm here today to advocate for the need for art class to be in its own classroom. I'd like to thank our administrative team for making this request and seeing the value in what we do and the impact that we're making on our students. During the pandemic, we were on carts, and it became evident that we were unable to do the program that we worked so hard for with fidelity due to the lack of materials and equipment necessary. I felt that it was important for the board to hear from an art teacher how detrimental implementing an art-on-a-cart program would be to what we've been doing. Eliminating our classrooms would be a step backwards in all of the hard work that we have done and give our students, not be able to give our students the best art program at Round Lake. I'm here today because I'm passionate about what's best for our students, and our students deserve a designated art classroom space. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. Next up, I've got Katrina Cook.
Hello, I'm Katie Cook. I'm the art teacher at Ellis Elementary, and I'm here to advocate for the art elementary program to remain in a classroom rather than be reduced to an art-on-a-cart regardless of the model chosen by the board. Currently, the art program at Ellis runs as an art studio, where students are the artists. When students attend art class, they are able to choose between a wide variety of mediums and centers such as painting, sculpture, sewing, drawing, printmaking, and other art-making materials, as opposed to being on a cart where they would be reduced to having one art-making option for that day, limited to the materials that the room and the cart provide. The number of materials and opportunities for exploration will be drastically reduced, and the kids' creativity and development would be stifled. Projects will become more craft and step-by-step direction instead of true experimentation and exploring of ideas and materials. Space in the classrooms will be limited and contained to the cart. Also, the ability to differentiate and meet the needs of all of our students, including our ELS students, would be greatly affected. In a classroom, I would be able to provide multiple options for them without worrying if all the materials are there on the cart. I have had to pull upwards of five different art options for an ELS student in one hour period of time, and this would not be able to be done on a cart. Art on the cart cuts into the amount of time that students will actually spend creating art. The setup for each class every time we enter a room, the cleanup required to return all the items to a cart and store projects that we need to then remove from the grade-level room, as well as your traditional time between classes, greatly cuts into the time for art instruction and art-making opportunities. Dedicated art studio space with materials set up, drying racks, sewing centers, sculpture spaces, and materials at the ready for student access provide great student choice, freedom, and time for art-making. We lose the continuity of project making, and instead it becomes a more one-and-done project. Another major drawback is limiting art to a cart with the negative effect it would have on our community involvement. In the past, we have been highlighting the art-making of our elementary program this year at the Hispanic Heritage Celebration, the Black History Celebration, and in two days' time, our Talent Expo. Sorry. These provide opportunities for our families to see what our students are doing. They've had many diverse options where the community members can attend the exhibits and be part of that creative process. I also did an immersive art exhibit in my classroom called the May the Fourth Be With You last year, where my entire classroom was turned into an art installation with black lights from head to, like floor to ceiling, and all of the artwork displayed. If I didn't have a dedicated art space, this would not be available for our students to participate in. Events like this have invited our communities and families to come and celebrate with our students the importance of art, and they are showcasing the amazing creative abilities of our students from pre-K to 12. Additionally, it is important to note that we have a district-wide fine arts curriculum, a vertical alignment from K to 12, and our students would be leaving the elementary school program and entering middle school programs with far less skills, risk-taking, confidence, autonomy, exploration, and opportunism that they currently have. Our district expectation is that we teach the whole child, providing them with a well-rounded education which includes the visual arts. By limiting art to a cart, we are doing a disservice to our students. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. All right. The third one I have is Julia McCann.
Good evening. I am Julia McCann, a PLTW teacher at Ellis Elementary. I wanted to begin by saying thank you for taking this opportunity tonight to listen and also for taking steps throughout this process to thoroughly weigh decision. I have great respect for the work every into creating collaborative solution for this challenge. Whether the board chooses the K-5 model or the Parker School model, I am here to advocate for the elementary PLTW program to remain in a classroom rather than be collapsed to a STEM program on a cart. Although I am new to the PLTW program this year, I have been a classroom teacher teaching science since it started at the elementary level. I can honestly say it's been an exciting opportunity to see the students' growth in the sciences in the last several years. From teaching it, working on curriculum, and now supporting our next-generation science standards in PLTW specials, Round Lake has come a long way in supporting science learning. What has also come a very long way is the students' stake in their own learning. Student inquiry has ballooned beautifully in the last few years, with students really engaging and questioning how the world works, their place in it, and how they can affect change for the future. Within the walls of the PLTW rooms, students are encouraged to get messy. They come in excited to tinker, model, test, and reevaluate their work. At any given point in time, I have grade levels, building and coding robotics, exploring sand erosion tables, and building three, building and printing 3D designs, all in the same week. It's a tiny glimpse into what students in our, do in our rooms. These things are also things that would be lost if we were to collapse our program and move to a cart. There is no practical use of these diverse materials and student work on a cart. In terms of practicality, pushing a STEM program into a classroom, into a classroom would face several challenges. In addition to instructional time lost to account for increased cleanup, students' projects would be greatly limited as well. Realistic projects would have the constraints to be set up, run remotely, and cleaned completely only within an hour. Storage of student work would be limited to what's available in each classroom teacher's room. As a previous classroom teacher, I can confidently say that storing specials, materials, and projects would likely cause issues in a classroom space. I feel it's important to consider that PLTW runs from kindergarten all the way up to 12th grade currently. Students at PLTW at high school have the program since elementary, and it shows in their understanding and capability within their classrooms. As much as I believe in the validity of STEM projects for students, I truly do, this program is a research-based curriculum that is centered around our NGSS standards. These same standards are being taught in all of our elementary schools. As it stands, we provide support in classroom learning through extension. Cutting the program at the elementary level in favor of a STEM-on-a-cart curriculum feels like a major step back. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Next up, we have Stacy Storms. Just hold down, yeah, just got to hold down the button on the, thank you. No worries.
Good afternoon. Thank you for listening to me. I'm Stacy Storms. I'm a fourth-grade teacher at Burfey Elementary. I've been there for approximately 15 to 16 years. Love the building, love my staff. Regardless of how the board votes today, I just am kind of concerned about the numbers that were distributed to the staff members. It seemed a little skewed. They had the two models, and the cost was obviously for partner schools, but nowhere did they show the money that we would save for not having to rent Plebiac and the two administrative costs that will kind of be able to put back into the budget. And I definitely feel that those monies should have went towards the new models and not somewhere else because I, and I don't know how money is distributed and allotted for, but I do feel that that money should have been put back into the model and shown to us. Maybe it was, I don't know, but it wasn't transparent. I'm very concerned about that because if you look at the 200,000 that I heard we rent for Plebiac and the two administrative, that's 400,000. And to keep a partner, not a partner school, but a neighborhood school, I think they said the cost was about 485,000. So it isn't as dramatic if you look at that money coming back into the district or not being spent elsewhere. Also, I am really concerned, or I'm really saddened that if we do go to partner schools, I won't be able to see the little ones. In fourth grade, I stand out in my hall every morning, and I welcome the kids as they walk past from the cafeteria, and I pick out something to, you know, comment about they're wearing a little tiara or, you know, if they have a, whatever. And I say good morning to them, and that makes my day. That sets me going for the rest of the day. And I just will be, feel very sad if that isn't, I don't have that opportunity anymore. Also, let's see, we have great teams that will be broken up, that we've been working to together. I'm sure we all will work fine with new members, but if you think about the partner schools versus the K through five building, we still have to do PLCs where we will have to meet on Zoom with other fourth-grade teachers, so on, so on. So we're not keeping all the fourth-grade teachers together so we could truly work as partners in, in-person basis. We work wonderful right now. You know, it's great, but I just feel that we're making a lot of changes, and they really aren't as positive or different than what we're doing now in terms of how we communicate and collaborate. Let's see. I think that's it. Yeah. Thank you so much. I'm sorry I wasn't as prepared as the other ladies here, but I kind of did this out of spur of the moment. I appreciate your, you're listening to me. I'm sure whatever vote you decide will be good for the district, but this is just how I feel. Thank you.
Thank you. And that is all the list I have for public comment. Any additional public comment? Could we once, twice? Sold. All right. Next up, Mr. Grifaldo, as always, come on up.
Well, I tried to make it as fast as I can, but I've got too many kids on the list, so I was picking up some from the high school. My comment, it's, I mean, I talked to you a couple times, and I mean, my main concern is that you guys think about the kids. That's, that's the main concern that I have. Whatever decision that you guys came up today, think about the kids. Whatever decision that you guys came up today, think about the kids and think about all the parents that we have multiple kids, that sometimes we gotta run from one school to another, that we don't think about that. And I only have one little one, but I mean, I kind of adopt a bunch of kids that I'm taking from one place to another, so that's the only thing that I gotta say. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Grifaldo, if you could just make, Mr. Grifaldo, if you could just fill out one of these little guys and turn it in to us before we leave tonight? Thank you. All right, next up then is superintendent's report.
Thank you, Board President Francisco and Board of Education. This year, 12 Ron Lake High School students, along with two teacher sponsors and two organic life representatives, were selected for the Illinois State Board's newly created Team Nutrition School Meal Recipe Development Grant. I'm not gonna say that again. We are pleased to announce that two of the three main dishes submitted by the Ron Lake High School teams are moving on to the next Level of Taste Test Event on April 21st at Joliet Junior College. Eight schools will be participating at the event. Representatives of the Joliet Junior College nationally acclaimed Culinary Arts Management Program will be preparing the recipes and providing feedback to the student teams. The two main dishes from Ron Lake High School are butternut squash chicken pasta and mushroom Alfredo with chicken. Grant funds have been utilized to purchase supplies and materials, stipends for the sponsors, and purchase service opportunities for organic life. Would also like to announce that Ron Lake District 116 has been selected to receive approximately $8,000 in Elevating Educators Bilingual Grant Funds. These funds will be used to assist current staff in completing the necessary coursework to obtain an endorsement in English or the Spanish language or bilingual education or to support current staff with an educator license with stipulations endorsed for transitional bilingual education in receiving their PEL. This is of great assistance, and while the number of English learners enrolled in Illinois has increased steadily over the past 12 years, the number of teachers qualified to teach English learners has not kept up. This funding will be allocated as part of the CBA's High Needs Reimbursement Section. Those employees who are selected to participate in the High Needs Program will attend a district identified institution to receive their endorsement, certificate, or degree, and will be reimbursed up to 75% of the cost of the required coursework. Would also like to call out a donation, gemanos, for the Teacher Appreciation Luncheon at Beach Elementary School. That concludes this board meeting superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Mendoza. Any questions in relation to superintendent's report? Hearing none, we will move on to some approval of open meeting minutes.
I need a motion to approve the March 13th, 2023 regular board meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Jewitt, seconded by Ms. Lee. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Same.
Mr. Jewitt?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Devera?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I need a motion to approve the March 20th, 2023 regular board meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Lee, seconded by Mr. Jewitt. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Jewitt?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Devera?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to the consent agenda, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda for the accounts payroll report for $759,589.97 and the April 10th, 2023 employment report.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Jewitt, seconded by Mrs. Larson. Roll call, please.
Mr. Devera?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Jewitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, move on to old business. I need a motion for the approval of the Partner School Elementary School configuration model that provides the direct route transportation without a shuttle, consistent start and end times, and dedicated spaces, classrooms for specials as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Mendoza.
Yeah, just to provide a little bit of background, obviously, we did a very comprehensive presentation at the March 20th board meeting for the public and for the board. We have two backup documents in the packet, one of which is the PowerPoint deck from the last meeting. We also have an adjusted cost sheet, which was requested by the board. It just wanted to, you know, before the board takes action, wanted to thank the community for their input. This has been a long process. Want to thank the board for their patience and also the staff in our district, both the administrative team and staff at large. We ended in a place that is different from where we started in both models. So we, you know, this has been a collaborative process. We've included a variety of stakeholders that include but are not limited to teachers at the buildings, had an opportunity to attend optional staff meetings. They also had an opportunity to provide electronic input. If my memory is correct, 22 public community meetings, both in English and Spanish. Parents had the opportunity to come to voice their, provide input and also provide electronic input. And just as a reminder, this is a culmination of really a 10-year process. Eight years ago, we felt like we could not provide the type of learning environment that our kindergarten children deserved, and so we started this process of having our students attend school outside of our boundaries. Lake Villa has been an exceptionally positive partner, but with our slightly declining enrollment, coupled with the fact that the lease expires at the end of the 23-24 lease or year, we felt like this was an opportunity to take a really deep dive into, and this is one of the most important pieces, a viable, longer-term solution. One of the things that we heard from the community is, you know, if you do A, are you gonna come back to us in three or four years and make another change? And while I would say I can't guarantee anything, one of the models clearly provides more flexibility to the administration in accounting for changes in enrollment. The last thing we want to do is continue to move our families every year from school to school, and we also have seen this year a kindergarten enrollment that is not consistent with what the University of Wisconsin says. We're trending above, above that projection. But again, the meetings included reasons for the plan, considerations related to the physical plants and space, very thorough descriptions of two separate models, strengths, challenges of both, and there certainly are strengths and challenges to both, and then, you know, try to communicate in a variety of ways, public meetings, social media, website, focus groups, formal presentations, collaborative meetings, monthly updates. So no matter what the board ends up deciding this evening, the one thing I feel very good about is we ran a transparent process, very inclusive, transparent, and we did it 18 months in advance. So the, whatever the board decides this evening won't take effect this coming fall, will be the fall after, and in both models, we felt like that would give families time to plan. So just wanted to provide a little bit more background, but Ms. McGinley did read the recommendation, which includes the Partner School model that incorporates direct route transportation, no shuttle, consistent starting and ending times, and dedicated instructional spaces for our specials' teachers. Certainly will entertain questions if you have them.
Is there no questions, but I did want to thank administration, especially Dr. Center. I'd asked for a better, broken down cost of what the district will incur through either model. The presentation was good that we received, but I wanted to see more aligned item cost. Because in the presentation, just to point out for the board and the community, in what was presented last week, it shows the purchase of buses. We don't purchase our buses. Our district is in a multi-year lease for our buses, so while that is a line item in consideration, it's not one that we really should consider in those line items of cost. So Dr. Center kindly broke out the cost ranges as I think that helps, is one of the factors in the decision that this board will make is if the board looks at the presentation, the K through 5 cost ranges, we removed the new bus purchase out of that, so showing the K-5 cost ranges, again, now with the mobile, that could be new or used. Obviously, we won't know until we go out to bid for that and look for those, for that mobile classroom. Looking anywhere from $946 to $2.8 million of cost ranges for the K through 5 model. With the Partner School model, again, removing that line for the purchase of the bus, we're looking at a cost range of $420,000 to a max cost of $921,000. And you know, that is only one factor in our decision that we are making, but I just wanted to make sure we pointed that out because I thought it was relevant to remove that line item of a new bus purchase because that is obviously not even on the table since we lease our buses.
Thank you for that clarification. All right, and then we have a motion by Mrs. Klingler, seconded by Mr. Jewitt. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinley?
Yes.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Jewitt?
Yes.
Mr. Devera?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And I need a motion to increase the personal inventory of 1.0 FTE Communications Coordinator.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Klingler, seconded by Ms. Lee. Any questions or clarifications?
Just to add to the discussion, again, this was at the last finance meeting. Again, this is a position that is newly created for the district. As we know, there'll be some changes in cabinet and organization of the district, so this is in addition to those changes. That salary cost range, again, is just a range. We will get the final estimate or final call of that salary once that position is hired.
Hearing no additional questions, roll call, please.
Mr. Devera?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Jewitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, next up, we are at positive occurrences. I will start it out, and I'll just throw it out there. First of all, it was an amazing atmosphere at the first volleyball games that we had. The teams are out there participating, everybody's having, having a good time, and just one of the best things about it is just seeing the participation, the students in the, in the stands, the energy that was in, in those gyms for both, not only the JV2 and the JV, but as well as the varsity, the energy was just palpable, so it was absolutely great to see.
I'll piggyback off of that. I just came from the game. It's great to see the turnout at even the JV2 games. Everybody's excited about it. The kids are excited about it, and I'm looking forward to watch the program grow. I also have another positive occurrence. I did have the opportunity to shepherd on the New York City music trip. It was an amazing experience. The kids were unbelievably kind and genuine in their excitement, and listening to the choir perform in the cathedral. I know that many of you got to watch it live stream, but being in the cathedral while the choir performed was astonishing. That was my son's favorite part, and he's not in choir. Listening to the band perform in Central Park and watching all of the people passing by just stop and sit down and listen to this random high school band playing was, it was an amazing experience, and I was very grateful for the opportunity that the Fine Arts Department allows for these trips for these kids. It was really great.
Okay, I have two. So we did get to go to the national conference in Orlando, and it was just a great experience. And I know I'm partial, but I was so proud to be part of Brown Lake. Our administration, our teachers, our families, they're just, we're such a community here and hearing some of these stories of other communities and some of their struggles and some of the things that they're going through, not even to bring it negative, but it just was, some of them were astonishing, and I was very proud of the way we comport ourselves and the way we address each other and listen to each other. It just made me really proud to be part of this community, so we were shouting it out from the rooftops, I'm just gonna be honest. So it was like a big thing. It was a really, I just felt very blessed. And then the other one was, we had a jazz concert at the high school, and my son is in the band, and he was part of it, and it was just so fun to see these kids jamming out to Herbie Hancock, and I think things that they would just never normally listen to, and they were so into it, and they were so good. And I mean, the talent in the school is just like amazing. So there was like a time where I was like emotional just hearing these kids do these things, and I just have to call out the, the program, just it's just, it adds such enrichment to our kids' life to have programs like that, so it was, it was like wonderful. And then we were seeing some of our, our old board members and our old alumni, and it was just a lovely experience, so I just had to call that out.
I'm gonna second on that. I gotta shout out to our community because people often tease me at work, oh my God, you're on a school board, that's so much hard work, and it is. But I gotta say, I love doing it. I love doing it for everyone here, I love doing it for our kids, I love doing it for our families. But after going to national and hearing from other people and learning from different places and just amazing things that they've done, and, and looking at some of it and going, ooh, that's a good idea, I'm gonna bring that back, or, ooh, we've been doing that for a while, we're doing good. And, and hearing from some of the other colleagues and people that we met there, just how wonderful our community is and how grateful I am that our families are so great and are, you raise wonderful children and you treat our staff wonderful and you treat us wonderful and you treat our admin wonderful. I just thank you guys, I really do.
So I just, I know we already spoke about the volleyball game, but I did wanted to recognize Mr. Carroll Zach and Mr. Peterson. They did a great job in that inaugural game, making it a special event for the families and for the students because I've been in this district and proud to say a product of these schools. I can't remember the last time we added an ath, a program, might have been soccer back in the mid-'80s. So to have a new program come, dare I say, well over 30 years later, they did a great job in recognizing the importance of adding another team to the school and for these families and for the students, so I thank them for that. And then the other thing, Mr. Francisco, Mr. Devera, and I had the opportunity to go to Tampa and attend another inaugural event, the Coalition of State School Boards Association, for an inaugural conference. They did a really good job in putting that together and how it was organized, even the presenters and what they offered. I know there was a class that Mr. Devera and I attended on, it was kind of like generational marketing, but in this multiple years I've been in, on a school board, it's probably one of the best ones I've attended, so I'm really excited to share that with the rest of the board.
But just as a reminder. But just as a reminder for all of us who went to national conferences, go ahead and make sure you put together your recaps and send them into Yonera so we can have a recap here on either the next or the next-to-next board meeting. Scott, you got throughout Guard? No comment. Guard did have a great season, finished up really strong, so awesome job there. Since Mrs. Klingler was just gonna leave him out to dry, I figured I'd pick him up. All right, hearing nothing else, then we'll move on to future agenda items. And again, I just told you the one, let's keep that in mind for future agenda items. We will have a full recap of all of our national conference trips and those great takeaways that we got and what we can and the comparisons and implementations.
Just a reminder from the last meeting, can we get the Plebeiac lease on the next finance committee meeting, please?
All right, hearing no additional future agenda items. Next up, I will take a motion to convene in closed session as permitted by Statute 5 ILCS 120/2 for the purpose of discussing the following: real estate matters, 5 ILCS 120/2C5, and closed meeting minutes, 5 ILCS 120/2C21.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Klingler, seconded by Ms. Lee. If I can get a roll call, please.
Mr. Tavera?
Yes.
Mrs. McGinnly?
Yes.
Mr. Jewett?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Klingler?
Yes.
Motion carries. That will bring us to the end of our public session for tonight. Thank you all for attending virtually as well as here in person. We look forward to seeing you again at our next meeting, if I'm not mistaken, is...
May 1st.
May 1st?
April 17.
Oh, yep, next week. So next week. Next week, we will be back in the high school, so we'll be back in the high school next week. So thank you, everybody. Have a great evening, and we look forward to seeing you soon.